Linda, you're muted.
You're on mute. I can see you talking.
I know because I'm saying, I thought I unmuted me. I'm sorry. And one of those evenings. Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the virtual town, regular town hall meeting of the town of Upper Marlboro. It is October 12th. It is now 7:15 and I apologize for the lateness. May I have a roll call, please?
President Penoyer.
President. Commissioner Franklin. Commissioner Duckett.
Here.
Administrator Kyle Snyder.
Present.
Police Chief David Burris.
Here.
Finance Director William Morgan.
Present.
Public Works Superintendent Darnell Bond.
Here.
John Hookson, Town Clerk here, and Vicki Stewart, Code Enforcement. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have to take care of a little previous business at the moment. We were in closed session, so this is to close the closed session. This session of the Board of Commissioners, Town of Upper Marlboro, has now ended. The closed session, the closed session of the Board of Commissioners, Upper Marlboro, has now ended and we are now in open session. I would like to make the motion to close. John, this doesn't sound right. I'm just closing the open session again and I'm not.
You're opening the session to make a motion to open the session.
Does it make a motion to close the session is what it's telling me here. I make a motion to open the session.
Sit back and hear.
Thank you, Sarah. Those in favor, aye.
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 No opposed? The session is the closed session is closed and we are now in open session. And another summary. Session summary to be read into the record, September 28, 2021, 9:45, the Town of Upper Marlboro Virtual Town Hall Meeting was closed under annotated code 3-305-B14B for a contract is awarded forbid or bids opened and to discuss the matter directly relating negotiating strategy or contents of a bidder proposal. Yes, public discussion or disclosure would be adversely impacted by the ability of the public body to participate in this competitive bid proposal. Those who voted to go into closed session were President Penoyer, Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Duckett. Unanimous decision of the official in attendance. Those in attendance were President Penoyer, Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Duckett, Kyle Snyder, Town Administrator David Burris, Police Will Morgan, Director of Finance. No actions, no votes were taken. And the topic discussed were contracts. And we're no other notes. That read ready? Now, I'm going to call in the Director, I'm sorry, Board of Elections at this time to give us an update on the election process. John, do we have the Board of Elections?
Wait. Sorry. Linda, I'm just going back because it was topics discussed with contract and legal matter, right?
That was in that closed session.
Okay.
I answered this with John.
Okay, okay.
We had six affidavits of candidacy. And the supervisors have qualified all six of them. We have the existing three commissioners, the Ballroom, Duckett, Linda Penoyer, Sarah Franklin. We also have Karen Lot, Brian Von Trager, Thomas Hancheff.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the last one for me?
Thomas Hancheff, I'm not sure exactly how to pronounce his last name and he's H-A-N-T-H-E-C. He is on rest reway. We have a lot of people on rest reway who have given candidacy. So good luck to everyone and I hope that there's a nice wide margin and
Um, Joe, I can't hear you very well. It just sounds like there's some gargling and I don't know if I'm the only one, but I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, I was, I was wearing a mask because I'm here with Yvonne. Um, so we've, we've had six candidates put in their paperwork. We qualified all six of them. They are the existing three commissioners, Janice Duckett, Linda Penoyer, and Sarah Franklin. We also have Karen Lot, Brian Von Trager, and Thomas Hancheff who have put in their candidacies. So there will be six names on the ballot. Did it come through this time?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you.
And I just want to announce that tomorrow night at seven o'clock, there's a meeting of the Board of Elections to go ahead and do the order of the ballot. All names will be placed into a hat. They will be drawn at random order and we will decide how the ballot will read. So you're welcome to, I will send out the link to the candidates this evening as well as announce it to the public so that they can join in and watch the proceedings tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And thank every one of you for taking up the mantle of public service. I guarantee you won't be bored. Okay, moving on, do I consent to the agenda?
I consent to the agenda.
And next order of business is approval of the minutes, three minutes in financial reports, approval of the September 14th, 2021 Regular Town Minutes. September 21st, 2021 Special Boardwork Session Minutes. September 28th, 2021 Boardwork Session Minutes. And finance and approval of the Treasurers Report as of September 30th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve all September minutes and the Treasurer Report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moving forward.
We have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. On paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving forward, we will move to Department Reports. First up is Chief Burris in Public Safety.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of September, we had two traffic complaints, we had a domestic call, we had an unknown trouble call, four accidents within the town. One individual stopped out on the street. We had one suspicious auto. We had an individual who was locked out of their car. Two commercial alarms, one check on the welfare call, one fight call, one stalking report, a miscellaneous report, one found property, one attempted suicide, a fraud report, a hit and run, one armed person, that wasn't really an armed person call. We have five disorderly calls, one property damage, and then one suspicious person call. Throughout the month, we basically conducted the high visibility patrols as usual. Attended the several meetings that I go to each month. Code Officer Stewart completed a National Traffic Incident Management Responders Course, which was very good for her. Helped her with traffic management and the things that she does in her role. I attended a demonstration that was put on by Axion, which is a technology company that specializes in body cameras, in-car camera. They were displaying their latest technology that they're rolling out for 2021. If you all didn't know that Chief O'Donnell, who was the Chief of Police for the town, for the city of Glen Arton, he passed away last, actually in August. So they had his visitation service, so I attended that. And I attended an annual Merlin Municipal League's Chiefs Conference, which was very good, learned a lot of new information about the latest updates. Also participated in Chevrolet's Public Safety Day, as well as Mount Rainier's Public Safety Day. And myself, Sergeant Irby, and Officer Stewart, we participated in our monthly movie night that we had up at the pond. And then towards the end of last month, myself and the mayor and the Board of Commissioners sworn, our newest police officer, Joseph Brooks, who started last month, so excited about that. And for the month of September, we had 42 moving violations, 76 parking violations written, and also five code letters that were sent out to various individuals. And there's no questions, that's it for my report.
Any questions or concern for Chief Burris? Hearing none, we'll move on to Public Works, Mr. Bond.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of September, our report is as follows. After things Public Works related, Crew Members Gibson, Shekels, and I attended the National Traffic Incident Management Responder Training Sharp 2 in Hanover, Maryland. New Public Works Crew Member, Mr. Shekels, continued training in Public Works Operations and Equipment and received required pin numbers from the county. Crew Members tested, set up, maintained, and packed up all items from this year's first movie night. Crew Member Washington and I were traffic control for an accident on Route 4 on ramp that was handled by Sergeant Irby. And I acquired the remaining pallets needed for the Green Team's Community Garden and assisted with fence setup. Maintenance and beautification. Crews prepped town-owned properties for the remnants of IRA. Increased wetness has increased the maintenance and deck cleanings of our landscape equipment, so take care of those things. Pet waste stations, supplies were received and distributed to the various pet stations across town. Also, I don't know why that reads twice. Street and sidewalks, clean storm drain outlets around town for in preparation for the remnants of IRA. Myself and Commissioner Franklin reported numerous boardwalk issues to PG Parks. I reviewed the town roadway engineering RFP and submitted feedback to our Town Administrator Kyle. And we installed a reboundable pedestrian crossing sign at the Courthouse Crosswalk for refuse accumulation, bulk day accumulations for solid waste, things going to the landfill were 4.69 tons and accumulations for yard waste, things going to Maryland Environmental were 5.69 tons. We had no dump body rentals for the month and the new town recycle bins were delivered delivered to Public Works for assembly. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving then to Finance. Excuse me. Will, if you would like to take that.
Good evening, everyone. So in the month of sorry, September, not a lot has changed, but a few things that I'll just speak about. So we did have a good month for parking meter fines. I'm saying good in a relative fashion as far as our previous months that we've been seeing in previous fiscal years. So we bought in about 13,000 in fines and parking meter revenue for the month of September. We brought in $7,861 to be exact for highway user revenue monies as well. We're starting to see some monies come in for real estate taxes. We seen a big sizable deposit of roughly about 41,000 of a real estate tax that came in. Right now, on the commercial side, we're about 27% to add our budget versus actual on the residential side, about 25%. Of course, in the previous years, we do expect big deposits for the month of October, which is first September and November and December as well. And actually, you will see next month that I think just $115,000 just came in for the month of September's real estate tax payments, but that came in October, so you'll see that on the next Treasury Report. Business license, we've done pretty well thus far with that. Exceeded our budget, we're about 35% of our budget. We are going to do, we're in the process of sending out those second rounds of letters to those businesses. I'll start to see an increase in public utility and business personal property taxes. We usually see those types of revenues come in within the second and third quarter of our fiscal year. And if specifically we're talking about the calendar year, it'll be the fourth and or first quarter of the calendar year. So a lot of those invoices or assessments are beginning to come in. So we're starting to process those. We did get a $3,000 deposit in from Washington Gas, like which is a public utility as well. On the expense side, some notable highlights, just media relations, I spoke about this over the last, I want to say, meeting or two. There are just a few invoices, roughly about six invoices that came in from the previous fiscal year. So if you, if you want to see our audit in or look at our budget versus actual for last year for media relations, we were under budget, but that was to just some, some latencies are provided and we call it a period 13 when envoys come in and we accrue more from the the prior fiscal year, but just showing those expenses because they're running out this year. Also, the planning firm, there's been a lot of traction in that area. A lot of that is due to the annexation as well with the planning and the firm that does the review for the phases and things like that. Um, we also had some expenses in pre-employment or substance testing as we're bringing on new employees. Of course, we have to take them through the pre-employment protocol, so there are some expenses in that area. Some small amounts for annual memberships and trainings. Of course, we try to keep our employees up to date on different things that are going on within their profession and or things they need to know for, of course, government services. So we did have a few expenses in the memberships and trains for the month of September. Have some overtime as well as far as salaries and benefits, so some overtime for the police and the fire, I'm sorry, police and the Public Works Department as well for events and or services that were provided for the town. And just sanitation, roughly that is about $4,300 a month. I know Goose, I mean, so Kyle had presented some good news for us, well, some temporary cost savings for us until moving forward with MB Contractor that we have. There won't be an increase. I know Kyle had presented that within the last meeting, so that helps us on our budget, of course. Just talking about some of the fund balances. We did transfer an amount over for Police State Aid. And they're right now, they have about a little bit over $1,000 of expenses, however, 4,100 just came in in the month of October, so that's another deposit, sorry, that you'll see within the next Treasury Report. We received about $21,000 from a grant that we applied for to have solar panels put on our the town hall facility, so we did receive $21,000 as far as reimbursed from that. That expense went out in the prior fiscal year, though, so that's something that just was accrued over here in this new fiscal year. Sorry, ARP monies, we're starting to spend small amounts in ARP, American Rescue Plan money, so we bought, there's some technology upgrades, some things to allow the commissioners and or the town employees to better connect with the community. Of course, continue, continuously to purchase the PPE supplies, hand sanitizer masks, things like that, and we also are trying to pay with the recycling can monies out of the American Rescue Plan monies. Though it may be, we're trying to find out if it's an eligible expense. Right now, we still have some wiggle room to put that monies in the, sorry, loss of revenue bucket if necessary. So I'm almost wrapping up. So open space, we did have about a little bit over $4,500 just bought in some open space grants. That's for the playground and a capital improvement, of course, the down payment for the Public Works trailer, which I believe that they have received thus far, and some other capital improvements that are forthcoming that we haven't necessarily expensed out yet, but there were key highlights for capital improvements such as a charging station. Just some other things, small items, I will be attending in the month of November with the Government Finance of Association of Accounting, Government Finance of Accounting Workshop Meeting in November. Be talking about care of American Rescue Plan monies, reporting and things like that. Actually, the first reporting has been pushed back from October 30, sorry, from September 30th to January 31st of 2022 for the first reporting on expenditures for the American Rescue Plan money. And that service, I know we're, have some conversations later on within this meeting as far as business, but just working with some of our financial partners to make sure that we're being able to fully equip all of our departments with the proper fleet, upgraded fleet, so they can serve the town. So with that, I don't have anything else, so that I am, of course, available for questions.
Any questions for Will?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make note that just roughly about 3:30, 4 o'clock today, we got our final audit, so for FY 2021, so the audit is complete. All Commissioners will be receiving at this evening as well, but our auditor just forwarded that over to me this afternoon, so I'm glad to say that, of course, we will, that the process was smooth and we had a great turnaround and we'll definitely beat the deadline of what's necessary as far as October 31st, but it's completed, the final version.
That's great news.
Very glad for that. Thank you, Will. John, anything for the Clerk's Office?
Well, I just want to let everyone know, now that we have six candidates running for the Board of Commissioners, I want to make sure everyone is aware that the election is being held on Tuesday, November the 2nd, 2021. The polls will be from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM here at Town Hall. So make sure you're registered to vote so that you can cast your vote for the Board of Commissioners. Also want to let you all know that Constant Contacts, we send information out weekly on Thursdays and hopefully you all are receiving our updates. If you have not signed up, you can go to our website, there's a pop-up there and you can go ahead and register to receive our Constant Contact updates. Thank you.
John, what is the last date people can register with the town if they don't want to register with the county promoting?
The 22nd of October is the last date of registration.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for John? Hearing none, we'll go to Committee Reports. First up is Greenwell Consulting. And I'm looking, Stacy.
Good evening.
There you are. Good evening.
Yep, all right, so good evening, everybody. We are, you know, a couple months out from session now, but in, in December, they're going to have a special session. So the members of the General Assembly will go back down to Annapolis. They typically do this if there's some issues with the budget or other unique circumstances. In this case, because the census data was delayed, they, the General Assembly was not able to take that into account as they sort of redefined the Senate and Congressional districts for last session, so they've called a special session. The exact dates aren't official yet, but they will, it'll be sometime in December, most likely. And we should have some more information on that by, by probably mid-November. So yeah, as you can see on the map here, the case for this special session is to, number one, determine the Congressional districts. So because of the population change, all the, all the states around the country are going to be redoing their Congressional districts to, to comply with the census population data changes. It's also going to affect the Maryland General Assembly districts. So as you can see here, this is the draft that has been proposed, and this is, so this is the draft map of Prince George's County specifically that will be debated in December. There will be actually a potential change for Upper Marlboro. Right now, we are in District 23 and our Senator is now Senator Ron Watson, formerly Senator Douglas Peters. And if, if we go by what the draft here is saying, then Upper Marlboro would actually be at the top of the, of a, of a new district, which currently is Senator Mike Jackson's district. And as you can see here in the, in the blue, it's the remnants of what was once Senate President Mike Miller's district. Like I said, this is a draft and it's, it's subject to change. We're not really going to have any clearer idea than this until they convene in December. But it's something that we are definitely keeping an eye out, an eye on, because you know, this really sort of, from a legislative and government relation standpoint, this really impacts how we sort of do business and represent the town. Either way, we're confident that we're going to be fine. It's just, it's something that we're going to keep an eye out and we will, you know, definitely keep you all up to speed. And then, other than that, you know, some things we're working on, we're working with, with the Commissioners on getting some, getting the town's legislative ask prepared. Senator Ron Watson is ready to have a meeting and, and discuss what the town would like to get out of next year's session, 2022. So that will be, that will take up basically the rest of, of the fall season now that, you know, the weather is a little bit more in line with fall after a very long and strange summer, at least out here in Western Maryland. So we will be working on that and hopefully have a great meeting with Senator Watson next month, early next month after the election and then and then, yeah, and then we'll find out whether or not Senator Watson is still the town senator, but until then, we'll, we'll just keep on with, with what we, with what we've got. Yeah, we will happily report back whenever we know more information on the Senate, the Senate District Line changes, and like I mentioned, that will probably be mid, mid, early to mid-December when they convene for that special session.
So, sorry, Jacob, so we're to meet with Ron and do our legislative ask, but then it may be a different Senator, so we may have to meet again with them and do it, which is fine, I'm just asking.
Correct. Yes, that is the, that is the unfortunate situation we are in right now. And the issue or the reason for that is that Upper Marlboro is already on the edge of a district. And the, a lot of the, a lot of the areas like Bowie, for example, gained a lot of population that's going to cause this sort of shift. a lot of the areas like Bowie, for example, gained a lot of population that's going to cause this sort of shift. Um, so yes, it's, it's uncertain right now. Um, I'm out here and, you know, I'm out here in Cumberland and our Senate district is proposed to go all the way to the Frederick County line because we sort of hemorrhaged this population. Um, and so that'll be like a, almost a four-county uh, Senate District for Maryland. So, yes, there's a lot of uncertainty. Um, it's, it's going to take up a lot of mental energy for the delegates and the senators debating this in December, uh, especially with next year being an election year. And a lot of people don't know if they're going to be sort of drawn out of their districts or not. So it's yeah, it's, it's sort of a high-stress time. Like I said, w- we're confident either way, you know, if worst-case scenario, we have to sort of do another presentation for the town uh, at the end of December or early January, and you know, we'll we'll do that and deal with it as it comes, but but yes, we'll, you know, we'll let you guys know what comes out of that and hopefully not too much changes and, you know, hopefully whatever district uh, Upper Marlboro is drawn into is a, you know, solid and sensible one.
Jacob, I'm sorry, quick question. W- would this change would take effect in the twenty twenty-two election cycle? Or would it, okay, so we have Senator Watson for this legislative session, but the next one, it could change?
The
The twenty twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. Sorry, I, I, I should clarify that. We, we're, we will have Senator Watson for this legislative session. Commissioner Franklin, I apologize for that. Kyle, thank you for catching me.
No problem, but we may get a new senator. Okay, because
Right.
The new, the twen- the November twenty twenty-two election will be based off of these new maps that they approved in December.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Jake.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, Jacob, uh, Mike Jackson's district, which is all the remnants of uh, Miller's district, what district number is that?
Um, currently, it is I, I don't have it off the top of my head. All of the numbers, all of the numbers are going to change as well. Well, most of the numbers are going to change as well. So currently, like, uh, District forty-one and District thirty-nine, as you can see on the, on the map, right now, those district numbers are actually up in Baltimore. Um, and right now, you know, we're District twenty-three, uh, so there will be a there will be a shift. I, I, I can send it to you. I, I could pull a number out, but I, I'm afraid of
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
You know, I can send to you guys, so you have it a map of the current Senate districts uh, so that you can compare it with the, with the map I sent out earlier today of the new proposed draft districts.
Okay, thank you. I know a lot to keep track of.
It's, it's going to be a crazy I, I'd like to have until January before we have to deal with uh, this, but no, it'll be, it'll be good and um, yeah, like I said, you know, happy to stay in touch and as soon as we know anything, you know, this is, this is obviously in terms of the end of this year going, this is a major, potentially major event for impacting the town and um, you know, we'll keep you guys on top of everything.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any questions for Jacob before I let him go? Thank you, Jacob.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
And uh, next up would be the Historical Committee. Oh, yeah, we'll go with, uh, what's up there.
Hi, hi, this is Patty. Um, so we did complete the Memories and Marshals on Main on nine twelve, and I just don't know if anybody um, uh, notified that we had purchased a voice enhancer for that, um, for that event. And uh, we turned it over to John so that you guys, if you need it, you can use it as well. Um, we did not have our archive session on the eighteenth. We will have an archive session on uh, October sixteenth, Saturday, October sixteenth, and that's about all I have.
Thank you. Next up, the Events Committee.
Janice?
No, go ahead. Sorry about that.
But yeah, I don't see anyone from events on here. So um, events met on Thursday evening and discussed the decorations and um, getting together candy and treats for Trunk or Treats, so that is moving forward. Um, and then they also discussed briefly the um, Christmas event and some ideas for that. They'll probably solidify everything for that at their next meeting in November. Did I miss anything, Kyle?
I think that's about it. Um, possible holiday event, December fourth.
Yeah, oh, I should have And if you want to come to Trunk or Treat, grab your tickets now from um, Eventbrite. It's going to be a free ticket, but you already need the ticket so that we sure we don't have people waiting in line only to find out we ran out of candy.
Okay, next up would be Sustainable Communities. I have not been in conversation with Evelyn. She is due back tomorrow, so we're going to have to forego that one uh, for now. Uh, the Arts Council.
Um, Kyle, could you take that one?
Sure, uh, not a problem. Um, so on Sunday, from ten AM to four PM, we have the First Annual Happy Leaf Arts Festival downtown on Main Street. Um, so we have uh, art at local artists vendors. There's a painting class you can sign up for. Um, and uh, there're going to be live um, music and, and spoken word and poets and stuff. That's from ten AM to four PM. Um, along Main Street, so that's exciting. And the mural um, survey closed on Sunday, so I guess the Arts Council is going to be um, tallying up the, the totals for that, um, to see who won um, the popular vote. Um, but all the um, muralists have been, or cut, checks have been cut for their payment for submitting their proposals. That's funded through the State Arts Council Grant that we got. Um, once the two artists are um, selected for, one for each site, the town and the uh, Arts Council go ahead and submit a um, grant request to the Maryland State Arts Council for implementation upwards of twenty thousand dollars to get that done. And I think Darylun's on too. I don't know if I missed anything, Darylun?
No, that sounds about right.
Okay, that's good. And the monthly artist of the month, um, features on the town and Arts Council, social media.
Okay, any questions for the Arts Council? Hearing none, good, I'm sorry?
I was just thinking, huh?
Uh, thank you for the report and moving on to Green Team.
Hi, everyone. Uh, this is Darylun. So um, for the, for the Green Team, we have gotten started on the garden as Darnell mentioned earlier. Um, we have the pallet fence um, almost completed. Um, hopefully we'll get the gate here up here soon. Um, we've also put cardboard down as well as we spread some of the dirt. We had dirt delivered, I want to say, a few days ago. Um, and now we're working on spreading the dirt out. We haven't yet planted anything, but hopefully we'll get um, we planted seedlings and pots, and so hopefully we'll get to transplant those this week. Um, so, yeah, that's my report for the garden. Um, Sarah or Stacy, if you wanted to add anything?
I think you got it all, because we don't meet till, so anything new since?
Yes, I, I don't have any additional updates other than the need for volunteers to come out and help transplant these seedlings, and especially thank you to Darnell and team because they have been wonderful to us.
Yeah, not a problem. And just to add, uh, we were able to um, move uh, pretty much the remainder of the dirt into the garden area today. Um, we smoothed it out as much as possible, and we still have uh, two to three yards that are available for just in case we need to add anything else in. And uh, I also took uh, to pick, took pictures, Ms. Jordan. I know you want to, you know, do your, do your scrapbook thing, so I'll be sending those to you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, there, it hasn't been made official, but I will say, Darylun and I were talking. We wanted to run it by Sarah. If there's any extra leaf grow, maybe we can set it off to the side and tarp it down and use it in the spring. But we'll see once we spread out what you have laid, and we thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Darnell and team.
I'll pass that along. Not a problem.
Okay, thank you. And moving on, uh, we have a representative from CERT or uh, Chief, would you like to handle that?
Yes, they, uh, the CERT team participated in the uh, some, summer movie night. And for the month of September, they had a total of a hundred and eleven volunteer and service worker hours. That's it.
Okay, have they decided when they're going to do the pond cleanup?
It is the twenty-third, I think. Yeah, I think it's the twenty-third.
Is that open for the public to join them, or is that just them?
Uh, I think it should be open for the public, but give me one second. Let me try to find his email. I'm almost positive it's the twenty-third. Yes, the twenty-third from eight thirty AM to eleven thirty AM. Saturday, October twenty-third, eight thirty to eleven thirty.
And it is open to public?
Yes.
And they
And they said they will have the uh, public safety briefing at eight thirty, so you should be there maybe eight fifteen if you're planning to go.
Okay, and they will take uh, uh, community service hours for high school kids?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Duckett?
Yes, no report this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Franklin?
Uh, so I just wanted to report that um, with the vision plan, I have sent over a landings article um, and a survey to go up on the website. And I'm going to start working with Kyle and John on a uh, portal for it so that people can go on and read sections of it and comment on those sections. And I know we're kind of, we, we've gotten to a point where we're in like a tricky spot to try and hold an event, I think. Um, so we'll have to figure that out administratively. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. As far as I, uh, the president is concerned, I just got back from MML's uh, Fall Conference. Uh, and when I say just got back, I got back at six o'clock just before our other meeting. So I don't have a reported, compiled as yet, but I will for the next meeting. A lot of good information was given then. Uh, moving on to business. First up is Code Appeal, one four three one one, Rectory Lane. This is a board discussion. Is Vicki on this call?
I'm here, present.
Did you want to present this to us, Vicki?
Uh, yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, so to get started, um, Monday, August sixteenth, I observed a property addressed to one four three one one, Rectory Lane. Uh, there were some items, um, in the driveway of the property and I found the homeowner's severe violation of the condition of exterior property area. And so as I observed that, I did leave a green town of Upper Marlboro notice of violation card in the mailbox of the homeowner. And uh, their card displays that we have five days to um, to follow up um, to get everything corrected in that five-day span. Um, at that, that time and place, um, I did follow up to uh, roll back around around the twenty-third, and I saw that the property had not been um, complied with, so I then drawed up a letter and I mailed that out to the homeowner. And um, they had at that point, uh, about seven days because uh, homeowner is a repeat offender. We had seven days to comply. And by August thirtieth, which is the date of the date of the letter that I sent out initially, uh, went back around and I checked and I observed that uh, had not been taken care of, so I then issued another letter which was uh, indicating the violation at that point. And I do have some photos attached with that, that's dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And I'm not sure if you all can see the photos, but there are photos attached uh, along with that date and so that the uh, violation had not been um, and that, that, that letter that's dated eight thirty, twenty twenty-one had been sent out by regular mail and by certified.
Okay, I'm going to see if any of the commissioners have any questions on this.
No, it was clearly presented in the pack.
Uh, Mr. Bond Tragger, I believe you're on, on the call?
Yes, I am.
And would you like to make a statement on this?
I, did everybody receive the letter from September fourth that I sent to the council?
On September fourth?
Yes, ma'am.
Was it an email or a letter?
It was a letter, you're on.
I do not have a copy of that letter.
Okay, I believe it was sent US Mail and via email. So I, I can, I can go through. It's a very brief letter.
Okay.
The notices of violation, uh, I don't believe comply with the ordinance. Um, the ordinance says that the ordinance exists for health, safety, and welfare of residents and visitors. And there's nothing documenting any conditions on my property that jeopardize the health, safety, or welfare of any residents, including the residents of my home. Um, there's no remediation specified in the warning letters, which is required in section seven, A, five, A of the ordinance. Uh, the first notice specifically referenced garbage, which there was no garbage, except for a single plastic lid that was in my front yard. It said to cut and trim all tall grass and weeds from exterior. And all of that thing, all of those things were done between the twenty-third and the thirtieth of August. The pictures on the thirtieth of August shows that the grass is not high, that there are no weeds in my lawn. There are some things in my flower bed, which are a little bit tall, but they're in a flower bed. And the section five of the ordinance um, says that weeds are in violation of the order, order, ordinance rather, if they are injurious to public health. So the last thing about the ordinance, reference section two C, says that any enforcement actions will be liberal and just. And I submit to the council that you know, you may not like what my flower beds look like, but they're not in violation of the ordinance. They're not a danger to anybody in the neighborhood or visitors. And I submit that the And I submit that the citations should be vacated.
Okay, and just for the record, I went back through my emails, I did not receive an email from you on, with that letter attached. I have not. And I searched it three ways, so I'm not sure where it went, but it did not come to me. Uh, did either of the other commissioners get that email?
No, I didn't receive anything.
No, it was addressed to the town clerk. Um, or emailed through the town clerk, addressed to the town council.
It was just reset, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Pinoya, Commissioner, uh, if I may speak.
Yes.
Are you able to show the photos of the property it has been taken? Oh, that I took? Property on sixteen and on the twenty-third. Actually, I'm sorry, not the twenty-third, the thirtieth. Of August.
Okay, I have copies, but, uh, John, can we get those pictures up here?
Yeah, I have to go back and forth to look at them because they're all electronic.
And if I may add, we're talking about section six violations, we're not talking about definitions. We're talking about violations, not section five. We're talking about the ordinance section six violations, which is, uh, violation six A, condition of exterior property areas. What we're referring to, not definitions.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I may address that, Officer Stewart. It says, shall be maintained in a reasonably clean and sanitary condition, free from accumulation of debris, litter, stagnant water, or garbage. If pests are found, the property owner shall initiate the extermination process, which shall not be injurious to the health of humans or domestic animal. And I submit that there's nothing in any of the photos that is unsanitary, that there's no accumulation of water, garbage, litter. Uh, so I don't think that anything in, in any of the pictures applies to a violation of the standard outlined in the, in the-
If I may speak, Mr. Bond Tracker, if you look at your photos, I'm not sure if you have them. Well, August sixteenth, there's pictures of buckets and things in your driveway. The driveway is supposed to be clear, it's not a storage area.
Again, this is addressed to the council.
Yeah, I do believe I'll see these, um, I have the photo, so.
Yeah, I just saw about now.
What you're speaking of, I do see, um, I don't know if that's a gas can, but I do see a lot of buckets and a lot of overgrown shrubs and trees and untrimmed, um, grasses, or grass, I'm sorry. Um. It's quite a bit of clutter, you say that, for sure.
Again, the ordinance, the ordinance exists for safety and health. And there's no documentation of any safe, unsafe, or unhealthy, unclean, unsanitary-
Is that, yeah, that's a question, is that a propane, is that a propane tank that's leaning next to your house?
Yes, I use propane to heat my home.
Go.
I think there's also weeds going into the sleeping bed, or am I incorrect there? So those are clear or partly empty, or, yeah?
I may add, on the additional photos dated September fourteenth, there are cement bricks and bags of cement on the side of the house.
Mm-hmm.
There's another photo that's showing trash cans on the side of the driveway on the fourteenth. Trash is supposed to be picked up on Mondays.
Mm-hmm.
And this was the next day, and the trash cans were still sitting out on the side of the driveway, side of the house.
And then you have the vines going over to the neighbor's property as well there.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Brown Tracker, are the bricks there for a purpose?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I have fourteen teenagers with driver's licenses, so I've been expanding my driveway when I have spare time.
Are those, I'm sorry, are the buckets and the propane tanks in you, are they missed, like, why are they there?
I don't understand what reason the council or anybody else in the town would be concerned about anything in my driveway if it's not uh, creating an unsafe or unhealthy condition.
Well, because propane left out. I mean, it's a lot of, yeah, in one place.
Yeah, I, I kinda thought, I was asking that because I saw two propane tanks together, so I wasn't quite sure, like, which one is actually used. And there's a taller one, there's a medium size, and then a very, a smaller size, so it's a lot of combustibles kind of like sitting there together, so that's why I inquired. Yeah, I think they-
That's not the topic of this citation. The citation lists garbage, tall grass and weeds, and items. Again, items is not covered by the code, anywhere in the code, it doesn't say you can't have items. Again, the code enforcement officer wrote me a ticket two years ago for toys in my yard.
If I may add, it says condition of exterior property area is what we're discussing, Mr. Bond Tracker. Not garbage, it's the condition of your house exterior area of your property, is what we're discussing.
Officer Stewart, you specifically wrote the word garbage on the citation on August twenty-third, that's why I keep using the word garbage.
Yeah, and they-
The code requires, Officer, the code requires that you specifically list the issues at the property and list their mediation. That's from directly quoting from the code, it's section seven point A point five. Says you have to list specific- The code does not, does not allow you to write me a ticket because you don't like something that's in my yard and you think I should get rid of it.
The Bond Tracker, this is not personal, okay? This is not personal, I, I'm writing up the description, it's the violation description as it's written in the ordinance. That's why I wrote it on the, on the violation. On the green card, you have five days. And if you read that, it says to maintain and a reasonably clean, you read the green card.
And, um, I think, you know, that it's, Vicki is following the ordinance with regards to how the exterior of the property is maintained. And these pictures are showing that the exterior of the property is not being maintained in a manner that's considerate of your neighbors, like, the issue.
But the ordinance, with all due respect, is not existing for the convenience of my neighbors or the curb appeal of my property. The ordinance specifically exists for the health and safety of the residents and visitors to the town. That's right in the first whereas section, page one of the ordinance. So I'm not, I'm not arguing at all that my property may be considered by some to be an eyesore. Frankly, Ms. Franklin, I was on your property just the other day when you signed my petition to run for council, and, you know, I, I wouldn't be remiss in saying that maybe there's some similar conditions on your property, maybe not to the same extent. But that's not the purpose of this ordinance. The ordinance is for health, safety, peace, violence, danger. These are all the things that the ordinance exists to empower the town to give citations for violating the ordinance. And none of those standards are met. The citations, the specifics in the citations were addressed, and the specifics in the citation don't meet the standard produced in the code. So again, I'd like to move that the citation be stripped.
Well, I, I, I have a question, I know, um, this is not the first time that, um, you know, we've, that you've been giving citations. So I recall that last year, we ran into the same issues. And you, um, clearly admitted that those issues need to be taken care of, and they're pretty much the same issues that we're dealing with now. During that time, you showed us that you were unable to take care of those issues for extended period. Well, you just didn't take care of them, but then we were, um, decided to give you additional time to take care of that because you said you were sick. So we allotted you the amount of time that you needed, a certain amount of time to get those things taken care of. These are the same issues that we're talking about now. And if I recall, you said that you did some things out of spite, you know? So I'm just trying to figure out, are we gonna be constantly going through this same issue? Because she could clearly go out tomorrow and rewrite one that would make you rectify these current issues.
With all due respect, Janice, the-
Commissioner Duckett.
Any cosmetic issues on my property are not violations of the ordinance written and approved October eleventh, twenty sixteen. The ordinance is crystal clear about its purpose, about the definitions. If I had grass in my yard that was over twelve inches, as I did last year in October when I had COVID, I said to the town council, hey, I had COVID, sorry, I couldn't cut the grass. It, it was out of control, absolutely agreed, thank you for your, uh, concern and your consideration allowing me to correct that. But again, this is not a question of having an unsanitary or an unsafe property, it's a question of cosmetics. And frankly, the, the town does not have the authority under this ordinance to enforce cosmetic concerns about my property. And I would submit, it's time to get rid of this citation.
Well, I, I hear you clearly, but, um, you're trying to basically say that we should not have any ordinances to help to manage the safety of the town in terms of safety that affects you in keeping your property maintained and nice, you know, appealing for your neighbors as well. So you're just dismissing that, you think we should not have any ordinances that address this and try to keep, keep properties uniformed and clean, and you're not being intrusive of others, of your neighbors. You don't think that there should be any ordinances to try to bring order to the town?
No, ma'am, you've misunderstood what I've said. I've said that the town has an ordinance, and the town ordinance does not give the town the authority to enforce the standard of beauty for any residential property. It gives the town the authority to enforce safety issues on a property. That's how the ordinance is written, that's what the definitions present. Secondarily, the ordinance requires specific violations and specific remediation to be written on the citations. And the town is not following that procedure sufficiently, in my opinion. It does not say if you cut down all your flower beds to twelve inches or less, then you'll be in compliance with the code. It doesn't say if you pick the vine that's growing off of your front porch, or the vine that's growing on the fence. It doesn't give specific things as the code requires, as the, as the town ordinance requires. That's why I'm saying this citation should be dismissed. I'm not saying the town doesn't have the authority to pass a, a, a ordinance that says anything you want. But the ordinance we have is not an enforcement of cosmetic standards for residential property. And for that reason, please dismiss this absurd, unjust, and ill-liberal, which is a requirement under the code, ill-liberal, meaning not ill-liberal interpretation.
So this is actually exterior property maintenance, is impacting your neighbors. Um, it, it, it is impacting, be- because your neighbors are in close proximity to you, having this, in this state of maintenance, can impact them beyond just having vines on their fence, but there could be critters in the long grass or in the vines. Now, I back up to woods, so we have, my neighbors and I all have critters, and we work on that together. So I think it's a matter of, um, how your property maintenance is impacting your neighbors.
And there's nothing in the citation that alleges that there's any critters in my yard, even though I also have but to five acres of woods. There's no allegation of any mosquito infestation, or groundhogs, or anything affecting any other properties. The nature of the citation is strictly cosmetic, and that is not covered under the ordinance. So, again, I'll move again, please dismiss this ridiculous ticket.
But it is not just purely because, that's, I mean, that's what, where the, um, propane tanks come in, and the vines crawling into the neighbor and the leaving. Well, I guess the garbage cans are different ordinance technically, though, but-
They're not specifically mentioned in either of these written citations, there's not a single mention of-
May I say this, so, Mr. Bond Tracker, are you basically, so clearly you want to take advantage of this and make sure that you can continue to keep your property in, um, questionable shape and continue to go through this same issue over and over again because you're not maintaining the property and some things that, you know, that are in violation, if she comes back out and writes another violation, another citation. So it, to me, it sounds like you are just making sure that you are able to skate by this one because you're just finding some small technicality, which will bring her back out, maybe even tomorrow, to write one that is very specific to the issues that she's talking about, and the issues that we see. So I'm concerned that, that you would take it, that you, being someone that's actually running to be a commissioner, would just excuse yourself and use it as a reason to, as, and escape by this when it affects the entire, your neighbors across from you, next to you, and it just affects, you know, the way the neighborhood looks, and you bring down everyone else's depreciation of their home. You bring down the appreciation of their home. So as someone that's actually supposed to be running as a commissioner, you're clearly saying that I really don't care about my neighbors. I want what I want, and, you know, if you guys just have to deal with it, that's not very neighborly. And you're running as the commissioner?
Commissioner Duckett, my sole solitary point is we have an ordinance.
And you said earlier that you ran specifically- Well, no, I'm gonna fix this, no, I want the people to know. Because last year you said that you ran specifically because you were upset that we gave you a citation. And it was just, and we were lenient. So you said that, I didn't say that, you said that you ran specifically because you were mad because the town gave you a citation.
I think you've misunderstood-
That's revengeful. I don't, no, that's revengeful, I'm saying, let's just be clear. Because to know what you're talking about and how you're trying to skate by this issue, and you're doing things out of spite. If you're gonna be someone that's running for a commissioner, you can't just have your own, your, your mind, your, what's good for you in mind and not think about your neighbors and the community around you. That's not very neighborly, that's not someone I would want to have representing me, if they tell me I don't care about what my neighbors are thinking about my house. Now, you can come to my house and see that I keep my grass cut, and we'll hope my neighbor keep their grass cut if I need to. Because I care about my neighbors and pick up trash if I have to. So I don't get your point.
I'll try to be much more clear for you, Commissioner.
No, 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 please, you don't have to be much more clear. I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. You're just trying to skate by. And if we come back out, you could possibly get a citation for whatever you're trying to skate by. So you're just using the small technicalities of the, of this, um, ordinance to skate by. That's, that's what you're doing and it's out of spite. Because you don't care about your neighbor.
Let me know when you're finished, Commissioner.
I'm finished.
Okay. For you to assign some kind of motivation to my actions was abhorrent. And it clouds the issue.
No, you did that. You did that. You did that, remember.
May I finish, please? May I finish? May I speak in uninterrupted as I've allowed you to? I'm a resident of this town. I pay thousands of dollars a year in property taxes to support the town. I'm not saying that I should skate. I'm not saying I should get any kind of special treatment. However, there is no ordinance on the books that says I have to use brown mulch or black mulch or green mulch. There's no ordinance that say I have to wash my exterior windows twice a year. There is no ordinance that controls the cosmetic condition of my property. There is an ordinance that covers unsafe. prohibits a property owner from having a dangerous or destructive property. My property does not in any way even approach that type of standard. Furthermore, the citations are written out of sync with what this, what the ordinance requires. And I'll move again. Please, I'm, I'm asking the commission, please, get rid of this. It's not written according to the. Is everybody still there?
Yes, we are.
I'm sorry, everybody went quiet. It's not written according to the ordinance, doesn't comply with the ordinance. And it doesn't represent anything that the ordinance prohibits.
Okay, uh, I've, I've been listening and I've been reading and I've been looking. The ordinance, uh, Mr. Bond Tracker happens to be correct. This ordinance was written in 2016. I can tell you, uh, that it was not given the proper vetting by the residents when it was written. And I think it is unclear on the several points. We've had this discussion more than once. I don't think he is, uh, Mr. Bond Tracker is being vindictive. He is pointing out a shortcoming in our, uh, ordinance. And, uh, that it in no means reflects on our, uh, code officer at all. She was following what she thought the ordinance said. I think we need to make the ordinance a lot more clear. Uh, that's just my opinion. Because this has come up. Uh, but in the same token, Mr. Bond Tracker. One of the things that this town is very prideful of is the way everyone keeps their home. I get after my own husband if my grass is too tall or my bushes aren't trimmed. Because it's, it's a look that we like, how we present ourselves as a town. Now granted, you are not on a main road. Neither am I. Uh, neither is Commissioner Duckett. But we all try to strive to keep the property as clean and clutter free as possible. And we would like to see everyone else do the same. I agree. Uh, like I said, with you, as far as the ordinance, it is not as clear as it could be. But we did give you leniency the last time, uh, and I'm a little on the fence on this one myself.
I mean, we, if, if this is gonna be nitpicky, we can send Vicky back out tomorrow to cite the vines encroaching in the neighbors and the propane tanks that. I mean, that many propane tanks in one place just does not seem safe to me. I understand she didn't put it on the citation, but I, I think there are safety issues, um, there. Oh, okay. Yeah. So I just, I mean, it's the propane tanks that are, uh, and the encroaching into the neighbors that concern me. Um, and I do see that that's not actually on the citation. Should we, should we get legal advice on this? Do we have, is Kevin still here?
We can, but my guess is he would probably, uh, in the way this is written. I'll be honest with you.
Yeah. And so, and I would like to say because of the way it's written and because of those technicalities, then of course we would have to go by the letter.
Yes. And I think we should, but I think we have to take this, this ordinance in particular. Uh, for everyone's sake, we need to look at this and revisit this as soon as we can.
Yeah.
And we also, yeah, you know, at a public, uh, note, had discussion on it because it, he is not the only one that's been affected by this. And we should take another look at it. Like I said, it was written in 2016 and I know it did not go out to everyone. And there was not, uh, Mr. or it was not big on public opinion at that time.
That's an understatement.
I, I said that nicely.
Right.
Uh, and I know this for a reason because if you look at the signed copy of this, I didn't sign it. And that's why I didn't sign it because there was no public input. So, uh, I think at this point, we will, uh, for that reason, uh, I move that we, uh, void this and take another look at the ordinance. But in the future, uh, Mr. Bond Tracker, we would really appreciate if you kept it a little nicer.
So, so Mayor, can I say something real quick? I mean, before you all vote on this, I mean, we just had this issue come up last month. Just had another person who had very similar issues. Um, and I think that even though we could sit here and say that the ordinance is technically this or technically that. The ordinance is pretty clear that you should keep your property in a clean and sanitary, um, fashion. Clearly, the, we can see that the things are overgrown, which is what we cited someone for last month. And we've cited multiple people for before. When we get complaints about this stuff, it's not personal. It's about taking care of the town as a whole. So, I mean, clearly the pictures indicate that we're not talking about somebody's personal aesthetics. We're talking about stuff that you can clearly see where it says that it should be kept in a clear and reasonable fashion. To me, none of those propane tanks, look, go back one. None of those propane tanks are hooked up. You can see the nozzles on all three of them. So that is something that is just sitting there, like the commissioner said, that is not safe. Um, but that's his opinion to put them there. That's, that's fine. But in order for us to actually move the town forward, I guess back in 2016, you came, they came up with these ordinances. So we have to be consistent about what we're doing here. Because the problem is last month, we violated somebody. The month before that, we violated somebody. This is his second time and he's gotten multiple violations. And this is just becoming a issue that we need to resolve, but we need to fix it. Because there's no reason for us to go out and force anything if we're not going to be consistent. Where this is clearly showing that there's some inconsistencies according to the ordinance as we have it. And it doesn't say you have to specify something every single time because the page would be six pages long based on some of these pictures that these individuals have throughout this town.
If I may, Chief, respectfully, the ordinance does say you have to specifically list not only what is in violation of the ordinance, but specifically list the remediation necessary to in, to resolve the issue. So that is in the ordinance as specifics and that's not provided in this particular citation.
Okay. So is the tall grass specific? Is the bushes specific? If nothing else, that needs to be corrected.
So again, we're not debating the condition of my property in these pictures. We're debating how the law is written and how the law is enforced. And the way that these citations are written does not comply with the ordinance requirements.
Okay. So I want to defer to Kyle Snyder because he was here when this was all done and he was a part of. So could you give some light to this and how we should move forward with this? I understand that it needs to be revised, but we also need to move on to new topics.
Can I, I'm sorry, Kyle, just before you go, can I just say that consistency, what, what we did last month? Like what are we going to go back and remove that fine? And that was also impacting neighbors. So we have to, we have to be careful with consistency here too. Go ahead, Kyle. Sorry.
Uh, sure. So the ordinance 2016 was based off other municipalities and how they had enacted their code enforcement program for several years. Obviously, the town did not have one at the time and there was issues popping up um, in which the town was relying on the county to handle things and the county was, um, acting slow with 90 day windows to close violations. And obviously, um, the town is a bit more friendlier. People may be surprised, a bit more friendlier in its approach to code enforcement than the county it would. Um, because if a county inspector had showed up, they would have done a 360, checked the property and issued every citation possible. Um, that's their policy moving forward. So that's one of the reasons why the town took on the code enforcement program. Was kind of one, protect residents from county inspectors and approach with more friendly approach um, versus the county inspectors who are overworked trying to cover a large amount of grass in area. Um, with that being said, with the violation, what I would, uh, suggest the board, um, is obviously, um, there's violations in here that need to be corrected. Um, just for my past code enforcement life, um, looking at that, um, either the town attorney can review the issued citation, uphold as legally standard and provide some guidance. But if it not, then it would, uh, just have to be reissued and the issues would have to be corrected eventually anyways. Um, and brought down the pipe because it is in violation of town ordinance, but it's also in violation of a couple of county ordinances as well. Um, but obviously we try and correct at the town level before the county comes out and sees anything. Um, so that'd be my recommendation to the board, have it reviewed with the, the town attorney real quick, provide some guidance as this is an issue that's come up. The town attorney did review ordinance twice, um, 2016 and found it legally sufficient and standing. Um, back in the time when it was written. So it was legally standing there. And he hasn't let us know that it's in violation at its time, um, if anything. So I would just run it past him, get some basic guidance. And if he suggests that the violations be reissued in a very clear manner, then they will be in the violations will be addressed. Or if he says that violations stand, then they can carry forward.
I think that's good advice and sorry, Janice, you go.
No, I just said, thank you, Kyle. I think that's, I like that route.
Because I think we need Kevin on this or we're going to get ourselves in trouble either way.
And I know just to speak for Officer Stewart's side that code enforcement, I did it for quite a few years. Um, it is a very painstaking process, um, moving forward. And there's always issues that come up with code enforcement. No one's ever happy. Um, but I know she, um, she made sure the letters went out on time. I'm not sure if Mr. Bond Tracker will try to reach out to, uh, Officer Stewart with any questions on any of these violations prior. Um, or if we just heard for the appeal process, I know the town's approach is if any residents have any issues with any violations issued, reach out to the town ASAP after they're issued their deliver, hand delivered to a mailbox. Um, so that you can see the violation as soon as you get home, you're not waiting for a letter in the mail that could be delayed. So I encourage all residents, if you have any issues, that way it can be mediated or corrected or clarified at that point before bringing it to, uh, the board of town commissioners.
Okay, I, uh, do I have a motion to defer this to the town attorney for the moment? And get his, get, uh, his legal point of view on this?
Yes, I motion we defer it to town attorney.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
You're on me, Janice.
Yeah, thank you. A second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bond Tracker, we will defer this to the town attorney and we will take it up at, uh, well, it depends on how long it takes him, but definitely by the next town meeting.
Thank you all very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, all this paper, I think I've lost my agenda. Kyle, could you put the agenda back up? I'm here, I'm sorry. Uh, next step would be the pod permit extension for 14133 Spring Branch Drive. This is for board approval.
And I don't know if Officer Stewart or Chief Person saw on, is this the third extension? This property has been issued?
I thought it'd be seen it before.
Oh, we've seen it before and it's been there quite a while. It was, uh,
I read this thing though. They're trying to get a shed in. Is that the right one? And they kept getting, getting delayed.
Yeah, from what I can understand, the delivery, I know, uh, I was talking with another resident uh, last week and they said that they did try to deliver in a, a very large shed. And then, uh, found that they couldn't set the shed at on that particular day and it was supposed to come back. And it's, uh, she has stated here that, uh, two delivery attempts were made August 20, or August 19th and August 26th.
Yeah, and it, is it removed or because it looks like it was close, like like her removal date was past this date because of the timing things.
Previous one, I don't.
Do you know Linda, if it's still there?
Oh, I'm pretty sure it is. It was when I went by the other day. I haven't been home yet tonight, so I don't know.
Okay.
It was there last week.
Yes, it's still there.
In September, we approved it. I don't think we have a, it's beyond, I know it's beyond the date we, we, and this is at least the second. I would have to find it. Do we know she has a, uh, delivery date? I, the last one she states here is the 26th of August. And we're now, uh, in October.
Um, so she, she's requesting that it be extended until this month. Really felt like there was a date on it. And next time I'm going to get my printed version because this isn't working.
I know it's hard to, to read that way. I'm looking at the printed version and it says anticipated date to be removed, fall of 2021, October 2021. We're halfway through October.
This obviously came in the day of the September town meeting, so it's
Yes.
Uh, my recommendation to the board would be to approve something, uh, November 15th advisor that we've extended three times. It fits with the board's position. You, you could say that's the last extension. Um, to mid-November or end of December or something, or I don't know how many times the board wants to extend this.
How long has it been there? Sorry, Kyle?
Always been there a very long time.
At least a year, possibly.
It's, it's possibly two years.
Okay.
So if I can, well, if I can add, she did, I did send her a letter dated August 27th. And, um, to let her know that her permit had currently expired March 31st. And as per, I had a, I had a conversation, a verbal conversation with her, Ms. Barnes, on, uh, August 25th. And she informed me that a shed was going to be built on her property no later than mid-September. And storage container will be removed at that time. And I did send her a new application to request a permit. And I did send her a new application to request a permitted extension for the time needed. Which is what you're showing now.
Okay, well, she has asked for an extension through October, so let's give her through the end of the month. And then it will have to be removed.
I think she's asking for October, so we shouldn't give her more than October, say, needs to be gone by thirty-first.
Right.
So Commissioner Frank, are you saying October thirty-first is the end date?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, because it's close. It's not, it's two weeks we're giving, and then it's, it's got to go, right?
Yeah, she had asked for, you know, fall and then in parentheses, October twenty twenty-one. Well, this gives her through the, through the full month of October, she's already had two weeks. Taken care of. So, and this, like I said, it has been there for at least two years. And then, you know, at that point in time, a shed would have been a much more practical idea. Which she said she's doing.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki.
Okay, next up uh, is the town roadway and survey RFP. This is for board approval. Have you had a chance to uh, look it over? We, we have discussed this previously.
Yeah, and like the changes are in there that we had discussed previously too.
Are we good with this to move forward? And it is the board approval, so I will ask for uh, consensus, since we don't need a vote, but a consensus uh, from the commissioners.
I think we should go forward with it. Release it, right word.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, as do I, so we can release the RFP for the uh, roadway engineering survey and design. Okay, next up is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four Police Vehicle Lease Agreement. This is for a board vote. Any questions on this?
This is the ones we talked about last time. Yeah, at the last meeting, agreed.
I do believe there's updated financing, correct, Will, from the last time the board, but it was in our favor. Interest rate.
Will, do you want to go over that real quick?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, I didn't get it all unmuted, so, um, I'm, so we're, we're talking about, well, I see the roadway. Are we talking about the
Now, we're on to Resolution twenty twenty-one about the vehicles.
Right, okay. I was looking at the screen to see a difference. So um, like Kyle mentioned, um, we went out to kind of shop the market to see uh, what uh, competitive costs uh, that we can get back for financing of the uh, police vehicles. Um, as most of you may know, uh, that we, we went out and got some initial financing in twenty nineteen, I believe it was for, to upgrade the, the fleet that we have uh, for the police department. Um, since then, we've purchased uh, three vehicles. Um, at the, at the time, right now, we are currently looking to have more vehicles uh, to upgrade the fleet as we are trying to continuously to hire for the, within a department as a lot of things are changing and are growing within a department such as annexation or uh, more needs to uh, for public safety within uh, the town. So we, we did uh, get two quotes. We got a quote from Univest and from uh, our most notable uh, lender that we typically deal with, which is tax exempt leasing. Uh, so just so you all know, the, we, we thought that we may have to pay off our first engagement in twenty nineteen. However, that's not necessary. Uh, again, that first engagement was uh, the first payment was in January of twenty twenty. Uh, sorry, twenty twenty. And then it was, it's a four-year engagement until July of twenty twenty-three. Um, so currently, right now, of course, as mentioned, uh, we had two quotes and the tax exempt quote was one that we think is probably best suitable for us to go with. Uh, they know all about our financials. Uh, they've been a great partner thus far. Um, and their numbers are actually identical to the second company that uh, quote that we got, which was Univest. Um, and I don't know if it's on here, but I'll just uh, what they're proposing as far as tax exempt and Univest for that matter, uh, we're looking to um, purchase vehicles for a rough estimate of a hundred and thirty thousand. That's the quote that we have. And as for the complete outfitting, and I won't go into detail what that outfitting is, uh, chief may or may not, but uh, the financing options for semi, semi-annual and arrears. And arrears just means that the first uh, payment for the agreement or engagement uh, won't be until six months after uh, we sign on a dotted line uh, to uh, establish that relationship. Uh, the options were three, four, and five years. Uh, we chose to go with the four-year option with the annual yield of three point two three percent. Uh, that'll make a semi-annual payment of seventeen thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and then four cents. So uh, that's the, the thought process at the moment. We actually, we also budget uh, twenty-five thousand in this year's budget for capital improvement or the financing option for uh, the, the, the vehicles, the police department vehicles as well. So this was something that we anticipated to do in this fiscal year. Again, we budgeted twenty-five thousand. Um, it, within this fiscal year, and because it's in arrears, only seventeen thousand is going to be paid within this fiscal year. And again, of course, uh, moving forward, we'll budget appropriately uh, for the debt service payments of all three, not just this one, but all three, of course, uh, of the payments to uh, tax exempt leasing, so. I'm available for questions if necessary on that, on that finances.
Any questions on that?
I think we covered it in the last meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so this is for board vote. Do I have a motion?
Uh, does it have an ordinance number? I can't see it.
I'm sorry, it's Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Okay, so I motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four.
Joe, have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, item five is annexation phase two and three plan. This is for board discussion and a vote. Kyle, you want to?
Read up the whole thing?
Yeah, read it all, Kyle.
Um, no, John's gonna have to read the uh, beginning of the annexation plan. Um, so it just, uh, just adds up. There's two pieces of legislation here um, in the packet. One is the annexation plan, which pretty much informs the county and state how the town intends to take over, not take over. Um, annex the new areas, what services will be provided. That does have to be approved tonight. Um, once it's approved tonight, we send it out to the, all the agencies listed, um, along with a draft copy or the copy of the uh, annexation resolution and the notice as well, which I do believe is in your packet. Um, so we're just introducing the resolution. Annexation resolution tonight, but we are, we do need a board vote on the annexation plan. Uh, but as you can see in front of you, it's a timeline or at the end of the stretch, um, the town will be annexing close to a hundred and twenty properties. Um, the majority of these properties have asked to come into the town limits. So that's really exciting. It's actually really unheard of when you go to commercial properties. As everyone knows, the uh, properties that did not want to come in, um, were removed, such as the Home Depot and whatnot. Um, but we don't have any knows in the current annexation area, um, so that's really exciting. Um, so as you can see, we have uh, the date tonight um, being introduced. Um, we'll be issuing out the uh, items to the county this week on, so that they have more than enough heads up on the um, I apologize, on the public hearing, which will be Tuesday, November thirtieth. We did have to push it back due to the timeline of the PG post. Um, this is an updated timeline, so it's Thursday, October twenty-first will be the first notice. Um, they needed today to get it in for this week, um, but because we couldn't do that until the plan was approved. We had to push back one week. So all said and done, the effective date of the annexation will be Friday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, so just after the start of the new year. Um, but I could take any questions from the commissioners, the public at this time, but then the, the the annexation plan, the item up for a vote, and then the um, resolution can be added into the record, not the whole thing. Don't, don't want to kill John.
No, you can just replant. Okay, are there any questions from the public or from our commissioners at this time?
Jan, I think it's clearly presented up till now.
Yes. Uh, John, if you would read the annexation.
The town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, annexation plan for the annexation of certain properties consisting of two separate annexation areas located west and east of the present corporate limits of the town of Upper Marlboro, including an area to be known as the second annexation area since incorporation, which includes the Maryland Route Four right-of-way and lands east to the existing corporate limits in the vicinity of the Showplace Arena and all parcels or lots located north of said Maryland four and east of Richie Marlboro Road, lying south of the Federal Spring Branch of the Patuxent River and abutting the town and the area to be known as the third annexation area since incorporation, which includes the Maryland Route seven twenty-five right-of-way proceeding east to the US right-of-way, US three oh one right-of-way and the Maryland Route two oh two right-of-way proceeding north to the Wards and Weeks Track resubdivision near Perseus Way, undeveloped and Largo Road, Maryland two oh two, as more particularly described in Annexation Resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-one and the map of said second and third annexations attached here, here too.
Thank you, John. Okay, do I have a motion on this? Everybody's muted, so I need a motion. Sarah, you're muted.
I, I don't have it because I didn't print out the paper. Can you make?
Uh, Janice?
Yeah, I um, I moved, uh, a motion that we move to approve annexation phase two and three.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Janice?
Oh, she's
Okay. Motion carries. That will go forward.
That's the annexation plan. Obviously, the board will find a vote on the resolution. Once it's read into the uh, in or introduced next, um, I think uh, Mr. Oakley has a hand raised, Joe?
I'm sorry, I
I, I was wondering both, is there a map of this and um, how, with the changes for the redistricting, will this all be in one district? Or are we going to then be spread across multiple districts with the under the new map?
I think once they see this, they, they will have to change the district.
We had alerted a mayor, um, so that's, that's for uh, there's two redistricts going on. One is the state one, that won't be affected because it'll all be, it's taking land, I think, up, up toward Beechtree, be in our same district. They're just cutting out Bowie. Now, the county council redistricting
That's another story.
We will be in two council member districts as it's introduced now. We did notify the redistrict, the county redistricting commission and provided them a map, um, but they have not gotten back to us at this time, um, if that answers your question, Joe. So it would appear that yes, the town would have four uh, county council members representing the town after that's two District Nine, District Six, and the two at larges, which is what the redistricting commission tries to avoid having municipalities in multiple districts, but we, we sent an official email and notice into them with a map, um.
We did give them mail.
Yeah, we'll follow up once it's official as well, is the other part. Right now, I guess it's not official, so.
We'll see if they, they're mailed.
But we do have a map, um. It was in all the other packets.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we provided the map before, Joe, but I'll get you, we can get you, we can send you one.
I, I can get the old packets. I was just scrolling through this packet and didn't see it, so I didn't know if it had changed or not.
No, same.
Oh, no.
Um, and then if John could just, however, the board wants to introduce the annexation uh, resolution itself, I know it's a long paragraph. I don't know. John, as town clerk, how do you think we should best handle that?
Did you want me to read every bit of it?
Not unless you have to.
Parshals tonight. Okay, everyone, sit back, relax.
Can you do it like a bedtime story?
Sure, once upon a time.
With voices, please. No.
Okay, okay, we're going back now. Here we go. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, the town have or plans to initiate a resolution, annexation resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-one proposing to annex certain property contiguous and adjoining to the boundaries of the town, including the following, the annexation property as described in the Meets and Bounds Legal Description of Parcels of Land Reference Hearing below in section two.
Kyle? Wait, wait, that's not what we wanted to read.
Yeah, you just uh, it's the next uh, attachment, John, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's the annexa, annexation resolution, the next attachment in the packet. It should start an annexation resolution in bold.
Oh, one minute, let me move forward, hold on.
Sorry, there were three.
Yeah, we had a hundred, a hundred and how many pages in this packet? So yeah, it was
It's pretty large. All right, here we go. An annexation resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro, the town pursuant to annotated four dash four oh one of the local government article of the annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of annexing certain parcels, lots, and rights-of-way of real property located in two distinct and separate annexation areas with each area adjoining and contiguous to the town, including the second annexation area to be annexed since the town was incorporated, to be referenced to as the second annexation area consisting in the agreed aggregate of approximately two hundred and fifty-eight acres and located west and south of the current municipal corporate territory of the town and further described as a portion of Richie Marlboro Road right-of-way intersecting the Pennsylvania Avenue, Maryland four right-of-way, west of town and the lands north of said Pennsylvania Avenue right-of-way and east of Richie Marlboro Road including Federal Spring Park and land south of the Federal Spring Branch of the Patuxent River extending east to where said branch becomes the northern corporate limits of the existing town of Upper Marlboro and extending east and south of the town, including along, along the north side of the Pennsylvania Avenue, Maryland four right-of-way to the existing corporate limit, bound, founded to the east by the Showplace Arena, Maryland four right-of-way, the Water Street, Maryland seven seventeen right-of-way and the existing corporate limits of the town near the western branch of the Patuxent River as further described in the more detail in the Meets and Bounds description bound below in section two of this resolution. And the map exhibit ref, referenced here and below and including the third annexation area to be annexed since the town was incorporated to be referenced to as the third annexation area consisting in the aggregate of approximately two hundred and forty-six acres located east and north of the current municipal corporate territory of the town and further described as the lands east of the existing corporate limits consisting of the western branch of the Patuxent River near the federal branch, Spring Branch, where the Collington branches cross Maryland seven twenty-five Marlboro Pike and Maryland two oh two Largo Road, including lands along east and west of Maryland two oh two Largo Road north of the Marlboro Pike, Maryland seven twenty-five, proceeding to the Wards and Weeks Track resubdivision near Perseus Way undeveloped and Largo Road, Maryland two oh two, and lands known as the Wards and Weeks Track east to the Pope's Creek Branch Railroad right-of-way and including but not limited to lands alongside either side, north and south of Marlboro Pike, Maryland seven twenty-five, east to the intersection of Crane Highway, US three oh one including but not limited to the Marlboro Tobacco Market subdivision, the Marlboro Shell subdivision, McDonald's McDonald's Restaurant and Dash Inn Food Store and Agricultural Fair Association subdivision and lands near the intersection of Crane Highway, US 301 and Peerless Avenue as further described in the more detail in the Meets and Bounds Description found below in Section Two of this resolution and the map exhibit reference here and below and providing for the terms and conditions of the annexation to the town of Upper Marlboro and amending the Charter of the town of Upper Marlboro for the purposes of including the annexed property within the legal descriptions and plot just depicted the corporate limits of the town and generally all matters related to said annexation and annexation areas. Whereas.
You don't have to go any further, I don't think. Does he? Do we have to make him read any further?
No, just the introduction, ma'am.
That's what I thought. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is not getting voted on this evening, correct?
Correct, um, the board will be before the public again at a special on Tuesday, November 30th, 2021, meeting of the board, a special town meeting in which the, uh, will have a public hearing and the board will vote on this as well. Um, and then it will go into effect 45 days after that.
Now we're good. Okay, uh, we are finished with town business, moving on to administrative updates, legislation, projects and initiatives. I know we have kept you pretty busy, Kyle. Do you want to update?
Absolutely, uh, so tomorrow, Commissioner Franklin, myself and Mr. Bond and anyone else who's interested will be meeting with Park and Planning's master trail person. I don't know his official title, but that's what I've been calling him. Um, tomorrow, we're going to hit all the trail, possible trail hubs, um, at the uh, Chesapeake Beach Railroad Trail at right next to Town Hall where the playground comes through. We're going to go from Marlboro Town and visit the possible connector trail from Marlboro Town to the Schoolhouse Pond. We're also going to go visit on Main Street at 202, the Western Branch Park Trail. And then we're also going to hit Water Street at, um, Judge's Drive for the, uh, Community Center Trail and the, obviously, the other side of the Western Branch Trail, um, to name a few. Um, so that's for tomorrow. That's exciting. Hope we can move those forward. A new playground construction, we have a groundbreaking ceremony event for, um, Saturday, October 30th at 11:00 AM, all are invited to attend. It's going to have a, a presentation on Phase One, and then we'll also have, um, Phase Two and then potential Phase Three, the splash pad. Um, and the contractors there for residents to meet and greet and some elected officials as well, um, and Parkham, the, uh, State Park and Planning who helped fund this, or mostly funded this project. Um, so that's exciting. Everyone's welcome to attend on the 30th. Financial policies, I know Mr. William Morgan's working on that. We'll have that before the Board at the October work session for discussion. Automated speed enforcement, five proposals received, the board interviewed three, um, firms. Um, and we're just going through the final motions for that. The bureau grant application, we received, uh, five of the six proposals as we touched on. Um, the votes closed Sunday, I'm looking at the results, but the, the $400 per artist, um, was issued out. That's refundable to the town by the state grant. Uh, Main Street Mail and Affiliate, the board approved the updated resolution with the language that the, um, uh, state wanted to see. We submitted that to the state and we're just waiting on them. Tax differential rate, um, this is something we've been working on, what's every year. Um, but I'm not sure how much the town's dived into it in the past, um, but pretty much what that is, is whatever the town pays or, uh, offers its residents is less the residents have to pay in county taxes. It's a formulated, calculated. So I'm working with the department heads in the board to see how we can maximize town services to ensure the maximum savings to the residents on the county um, tax rate side of things. That's police patrol, that's public work services, that's if we purchase vehicles, if we support the voluntary fire department um, and stuff like that. So that's a, a project we're working on for the residents. The town honestly doesn't see any benefit. It's really just for the residents. Um, it's not like the town gets extra money or whatnot, but it, it's just to make sure the residents' county tax rate, we keep that as low as possible. Um, the common more viewfication, uh, that's just thrown whole till springs, we'll, um, push that back. Church Street Parking Lot and Pocket Park, we just got the appraisal back today. Um, I guess I gotta check the board to see uh, the official final number, um, to offer. Um, it was appraised at $20,000. This town does have a $20,000 grant from the state to purchase it. Um, so if the board, actually, I can get general consensus now. If, if the Commissioners wish the staff to move forward with that 20,000 number, um, we can do that and see where it goes.
Yeah, I think if it's, if it's worth 20,000, which I mean, is kind of debatable, but you know, he's not going to take 18 for it. So going to 20 and saying, this is what we had it appraised at. You know, that's, I think that makes sense.
Okay, that, that, another board.
All right, Janice, were you able to look at the appraisal?
Yes, and I think, I think that we shouldn't go over, I mean, whatever we, it was approved for, which was the 20, I think we should stick with that.
Does that include, um, points? All that other stuff that goes with buying property?
That'll be a little more, um, because we're working with a, uh, land use attorney with, uh, through Kevin Best under his contract. Um, so there is some wiggle room in the state grant, um, to pull that from because we have a total of $175,000, whether we use it for the pocket park or all for the, uh, the parking lot on Church Street, um, which is the next project we're touching as well. Um, but it can go for both, but just for the public's knowledge, we offered initially 18,000 for the property. The property owner countered at 25,000. Um, and then we had it appraised at that point, um, because we were hoping they would take 15, but they didn't. So now we know it's a 20,000 and the appraiser did advise it is unbuildable unless it's incorporated into an adjourned property, um, which is possible, but. So we can go back and, um, approach them with the 20,000 and I'll, I'll let the board know at that point, um. And then obviously there's more legal steps to take after it's accepted. The town has to pass an ordinance and whatnot, so. There's no, everything will be upfront for the public to know exactly what's happening in costs. Were there any other questions with that? Okay. Um, Phase Two and Three Annexation, we discussed, uh, Water Street Parking Garage, Green Wells, working with, uh, Revenue Authority to get the figures on that before we go into a possible, um, revenue sharing agreement with Revenue Authority on that. Um, and the Marlboro Town, um, HOA MOU, um, we met and, uh, reviewed that back at September's work session. We have it rescheduled for the November work session, um, going to meet with the town attorney, go through a couple of issues and obviously make some changes that we discussed then. Um, but one of the big things for that is, is the road survey. Um, once that's done, we'll have a much better idea. But we'll just keep that on the agenda every so often until it's finalized moving forward. And then electric vehicle charging stations, Chief's been working hard to, uh, try and rally the vendors. We've had a very wide range of quotes for this. Um, anywhere from 20,000 to 4,000. So obviously, we're working with the vendor with the $4,000 quote. Um, and, uh, I know Chief and, uh, Mr. Morgan are working on that, so hopefully we can get uh, two electric vehicle charging stations installed at the Town Hall and then also looking to potentially, um, install some additional ones downtown so that people using, going to the courthouse can actually use them. Um, we are aware they're apparently going to be installing it pay charged, charging stations at the, uh, County Board of Education building. We're still trying to find exactly where. And we have the four at the Showplace Arena, which is kind of out of the way. But those are the large projects underway. I can take any questions on these or any other projects.
Sorry, with the Marlboro Town MOU, what, why is like the November, October?
Uh, just October had a lot of items on it off the bat. And I know we're waiting on the road surveys is the biggest chunk of that, um, so I didn't want to put that into the wayside. My understanding was the board wanted to, uh, incorporate it all into one agreement? Or was it going to be?
I thought at the last meeting that the Board of the, of Marlboro Town wanted us to adopt it without the roads, so that some adopted. So.
That's correct, Sarah.
Is that correct?
Didn't we also wonder on it by the town attorney?
Yeah, that's who he's saying. We couldn't do it until he has done the annexation as well, so he's a bit more freed up now. Um, but I'll see if he can get it back by October. We can, uh, we can get that going. That's two weeks away. I'll see if he can look into it by then.
And I just kind of wanted to say on the tax differentials, like, because when, uh, Mr. Brotteringer was here, he was saying that he pays thousands of dollars in town taxes, and I just wanted to dispel that myth, you pay thousands of dollars to the county, um, and the county gives us a portion of that, which is a small portion, um, and then we work to get your county rate reduced as well. So just want to make sure everyone understands that.
There is a big difference between the town tax and the county tax.
Yeah.
And the larger lump sum is what you're paying the county.
Eddie has her hand raised.
Joe had his first.
Oh, I didn't know if that was still up from the last time.
Joe, did you?
Sorry, mine's, mine's a mistake. I never lowered it.
Okay.
Now Patty.
All right, so, uh, question would be, um, the Capital Trail Coalition Partnership? Do, do, uh, is there an invitation by any chance? And can you tell me what time that'd be? Is it possible that I could attend that? I'm kind of interested.
Yeah, you could. I think it's more of an introductory meeting, um, with Park and Planning. Well, actually, Capital Trail Coalition can't make it. Um, that's why I just said Park, if, because there's a overall.
Oh, then no, I don't want to go with Park and.
Yeah, so they're not going to be there, so it's just going to be the Park, the Park and Planning. This is going to be a bigger, uh, a big thing happening for the town, I think, that'll, um, be future walkthroughs, because we have, we're working with both the Capital Trail Coalition and the Rails to Trails Coalition. Rails for Trails, just for the Chesapeake Beach Railroad because they focus on converting old train lines to trails.
Yeah, I'm, I'm real interested in that. If you don't mind kind of keeping me.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you actually get real people other than the county to do it, I'd really like, I'd really be interested in it. And the other thing was, um, pallets, you know I want to hear about the pallets.
Yeah, I know they pulled two dozen pallets out and, uh, they were not happy when I sent your other pictures to them. So there, I think they're scoping it right now. I haven't heard any updates. I was going to give them some time, um, possibly till some of the brush dies off and they can get in there.
Honestly, one of them is literally right here. As soon as you get in the river by the, um, by the bridge and go maybe 100 yards, there's one right there.
Is it the Main Street or Water Street Bridge?
Water Street Bridge.
It's after the Water Street Bridge.
Yeah, it's on, okay, so if you're from town, if you're looking at the bridge, it's on the right-hand side and it'll be maybe 100 foot up and it'll be on the left-hand side.
Okay.
But yeah, I, I did geo-tag them with my pictures.
Yeah, they were so proud. They thought they got them all out, which they made a pretty good effort.
Oh, no, you saw the one big one where they didn't even get near.
Yeah.
It had like four or five pallets on it.
We're happy that they were.
We're, oh, and Brian says, but we're happy that they're working it.
Progress, yeah.
Thanks, Kyle, appreciate it.
No problem, of course.
Okay. Okay, uh, any other questions for Kyle? Under General Commissioner and Staff Items, anything else?
So I just have one resident concern to pass on, which is that, um, there, a ha, a resident got a parking ticket, but they're saying that the letters aren't going out, like, the date on the letter is arriving like after the date of the fine increase. So I don't know if we can check with the vendor on whether they're kind of falling behind on that, because that's the vendor that sends it out, right?
Yeah, that's correct. There is a delay in the ticket, um, in the letter going out, the letter's courtesy, the ticket's the formal official document. So it's more the letter's a courtesy and it goes out 10 days after initially issued, because the town does get charged for all the letters, um, that we send out. So that's why there's a delay, but after 10 days, but they should be reaching them pretty close to, um, when they double. I'll check with the vendor and see, and I'll look up this, I think I know its citation. We'll look up and see if it was the former vendor sending the ticket or the current vendor sending the ticket as well.
Okay.
Because I know that's something we're working through as well as we transition over, so.
Thank you.
Of course.
Um, this is Patty again. I'm just going to butt in even though I raised my hand. Um, do you have a date for when the speed cameras may actually be put in place?
Uh, sure, so I think the board's going to formally approve the vendor at the November Town Meeting. Um, we weren't able to get any, any contracts through in time, um, for tonight's meeting. Um, so the November Town Meeting is the next opportunity to do that. Um, and so, uh, I think it was 20, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, 20 weeks after contract?
Yes.
And that's right. The 40th.
20 weeks, that's, um, so we're looking at about six months from now.
Pretty much.
It could be a little sooner.
Okay.
But that's, yeah, that's the, uh, that's the timeline, unfortunately, um.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. There may be speed equipment up, um, because they'll be issuing a month of that, a month, right, Chief, is issuing warnings?
Yes, it has to be a 30-day, uh, warning period.
So there'll be a camera up and people will see that.
Um, one other thing, and I'm sorry, is, has is anybody doing anything about the racing up and down on Route Four? The motorcycles that are just flying up and down noisily back and forth. I mean, they're literally drag racing up and down Route Four now.
They were on all crane last night, too. Yeah.
So is there something that we can do? Um, e- even if it's just to ask for the county police to start policing that area? Um, I actually saw somebody ride on their back wheel down Water Street.
Uh, Route Four is the Maryland State Police, so you call it Forestville Barrack. Um, the guys doing the Willys, you know, that's what they're doing now. They're doing it everywhere, so, yeah, we're looking out for that, but Route Four is, uh, Maryland State Police. The county's not going out for that.
Ken, is there any way that we as a town can ask for more state help because of this? I mean, I, I realize all you're going to do is kick it down the road, but I, I want it kicked down the road. I don't want it right here, you know, where, where we, where we're living and having to li- listen to all that, all those racers going up and down. So can they kick it down to, I don't know, Basin's Corner?
Well, that's where they're coming from.
Oh, okay, because so we can, can we take it down to Bowie? There's too many red lights. I, I get it, there's, it's one of the red lights.
Yeah, I think the county has an initiative on it, so maybe we can look to that and.
It, it's not just the county, it's throughout the state.
Yeah.
It's happening in Baltimore, Baltimore County, several of the, they know that they know that they're not going to get chased.
Well, and that's the thing, so if they start setting up where they know they're going, I mean, maybe that would, that would at least deter it if nothing else. But this is ridiculous. I mean, this is like Friday, Saturday, I, I see it 11 o'clock on Thursday nights. I mean, they're just wailing up and down Route Four. It's kind of ridiculous, but anyway, my rant, I'll stop, bye.
I mean, we can, I, we can look into the drag race initiative, right, and talk to them or no? Do they have like way to do anything with that? We can talk about that next time, because it's 9:20.
Yes.
Or just in general.
Joe, you, you, Joe, your, your hand is still up. Are you going to put it down or?
No, I was, I was specifically regarding this one. Now that we bridge over to the Equestrian Center, part of Route Four is actually in town. I don't know if that affects where we're planning on putting cameras or anything, and you know, we'd probably get called out by USAA for being one of those asshole towns that like, you know, just tries to collect money from speeders, but.
I think Joe didn't see that here.
Have children on the camera, but, um, that is still, uh, Maryland State Police, even though it's in the town.
All right.
But, um, the cameras, we can only put on in residential districts or in, at red lights or in, uh, school zones. So we can just put them on the side of highway. Um, the state could if they're doing construction, though. But I just want to say Chief versus working hard to build up the police force as the board just approved the new patrol cars. We have officers coming down the pike so that we can expand patrol hours. Um, so I just want to give him kudos, because that's that, that's what he has to do to build it up and to, to answer a lot of these concerns, to step of a steady police presence.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion? Oh. Let's, let's motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
Okay, do I? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
You don't, oh, you don't like this series. That's going to be the
John? Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if you heard me enough.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. It is now nine twenty-one and the meeting is officially adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.